Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 15th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Bill, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. This evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. We're going to start tonight with citizens' input, and we do ask if anybody doesn't want to come to a meeting for citizens' input, they could certainly send anything through the email to the town selectman's office, and coincidentally, we have one, and Leah is going to read it for us tonight.
Yeah, so I'm just going to read it. This is from Joe Garrity, and he lives on Mill Street, I believe. So my public comment for tomorrow night's selectman meeting, and I don't know if Mr. Keegan can answer this, is for the 20% capacity at Gillette Stadium. Can that happen in the near future in the state's reopening plan? Is it in the current step of Phase Three, Phase Three, Step Two, or the 20% capacity can't happen until Phase Four? So I let them know we can't discuss it tonight, you know, because it's citizens' input, but maybe Mr. Keegan can follow up with them and let them know where we are.
On something like this, though, I think you could answer it.
Yeah, it's a pretty straightforward answer, I think. My understanding is that it's actually a Phase Four discussion, and that right now, it's anybody's guess as how that's going to happen, because obviously, I think because our numbers are staying low, it's actually trending in the right direction, but we have not gotten any further guidance from the state on when that's going to happen. So I know that the craft organization has applied to the state for consideration for their home games during the month of September, and that has been denied so far, but they said they would further consider it at the end of September to take a look at how school has started and how the numbers are trending, and if that helps, then certainly they'll give consideration to a possibility of having fans in the stands possibly in October. So that's the latest information I have on that.
And Mr. Garrity had also reached out to me about what color we are right now as a town, so are we still yellow?
We are currently yellow, though the numbers are trending back in the right direction again. We did spike a little bit, and we had a situation where we had a case, where we had several cases from one family bumped the numbers up, but we're now back at a point where, I'm going to give the report shortly, but we are trending in the right direction here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Oh, COVID-19 update.
I don't want to steal my thunder before I get into it. We currently, in total, we've had 152 cases in Foxborough since the beginning back in March. We have had 123 people recover. We have currently nine cases active in the town. Now, the numbers have been as low as four at one point, and obviously zero before COVID-19 occurred, but we currently have nine cases, so it is up a little bit, but it's not in a significant difference. In fact, last week, we had as much as 13, so the numbers have come back a little bit, back to the right direction. We've experienced only one death as a result of COVID-19 cases, and 19 folks have been lost in the follow-up phase, and we have, here's the good news, we've had 3,053 people test negative, which is a really relatively high number. That's about, roughly around one-fifth of the proper population has gone in that direction.
Bill, before you go any further, when you said 19 people have been lost, you mean in tracking them, not in...
In the follow-up phase, yeah. So what happens is that we'll all track people, and then they lose connection with the state or with the state board of health, and so we're not able to follow up with them any further than what we have. Currently, there are 19 people that, of the 123, if you add those numbers together, it gets closer to the actual numbers. And so currently, like I said, we've only had one death, and we've had 63 people have positive antibodies tests as well, so that's another positive indication, too. So the numbers in Massachusetts are still below 1%, which is a good sign, and if it stays that way, and school continues to open with very real impact, and then we'll certainly see where the next phase takes us, and hopefully, we'll get to a little greater sense of normalcy. There is a concern, of course, as we head into the colder weather, that numbers will continue to spike again, also combined with the fact that regular viruses during this time of year become more prominent, and so that combined with COVID could actually create some issues. But I will say that I think most people will tell you this, that because we've done so much, we've had some experience with masks during the past summer months, few people have had colds, and few people have been sick overall. In fact, the numbers, health insurance-wise, are actually quite, are trending very, very good in the right direction because of that. So it's good to be able to report that information, too.
That's great, because one thing people have always said with colds is wash your hands and stay away from people, and now we're being forced to wash our hands, say, six feet apart, and wear masks. So I never thought about that, but that's a great trend.
It's actually true.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Al, you're up. 7:10, we've got a Veteran Services Officer doing our second of three weeks of presentations.
All right. Hi, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, so this is the second half that we are doing, recognizing our World War II veterans. In the audience today, we have Mr. Charles Bridham, Kenneth Gay, and Roger DiMarzio. So I'm just going to present them with a small token of our appreciation, and then we'll take some photos, and we'll let them speak and, you know, tell them stories, because they have stories to tell, for sure. Okay?
That's great. Could you just mention to the people at home, remind everybody what you just gave the veterans? I know you gave them two things.
Sure. So I gave everybody, not everybody, but our veterans, a certificate, and I should have probably read it. You can watch the last two weeks, it's the same thing. It just basically thanks them for their service, their sacrifice, their dedication, and, you know, they fought an awful war, and us Americans, we are grateful that we won the war. And then I gave them a coin, a challenge coin, with the Foxborough seal, so they have that.
So could you read the names into the record again, so that, for everybody's benefit?
Sure. So we have Charles Bridham, we have Mr. Kenneth Gay, and we have Roger DiMarzio.
All right.
And this whole thing started because Mr. Bridham here has a neighbor who wanted him recognized, and I said, "Sure, my pleasure, but if I do one veteran, I have to do all the veterans, and oh, my God, what a great idea, why don't we just do all the veterans," right? So we have them. So I would love a photo. Can we take a photo together, the three of you? Can we take a picture? Can I have you sit up here?
May I help you?
Yeah, take that with you.
You're okay. All right. Mr. Gay, do you want to go sit down?
Careful of the wire.
Can I escort you? What a surprise!
Can you go away, yeah?
It's quick and sweet.
Close when I wash the body.
Sure. Do you want to take a seat for me? Want to sit down for me?
Sure. Sit down. Oh, she's... Not really. You can take your mask off for a minute.
I want to see those smiling faces.
Everybody hold their breath for five minutes.
You didn't have to take it off, just pull it down.
There you go.
Very, very better. Way better.
One, two, three. Please. From us.
There we are. Want to get one more?
Yeah. Yeah, can we get this all high?
So, gentlemen, I have a question for you. Was it easier fighting in World War II than the coronavirus?
Oh, gosh.
Which one was easier?
Seriously. Oh, my goodness. Yeah, good. Perfect.
While they're sitting here, do we want to put a microphone?
Yes.
Yes.
You're on it. Okay.
Charlie, do you want to tell me what branch of service and what theater you fought in?
I was on the Air Force, and I was all over the United States and North Africa.
Very good.
You were playing.
I was in the photo mapping squadron, and we would go if they were going to bomb someplace, we would go in and map it out first, or if they were going to do a land attack, we would go in and map the land out and give them a map to go by.
That's important information to have.
Well, it helps a little.
Yeah, a little. Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Gay, do you want to talk about where you, well, I know your story, but do you want to talk about what branch of service and what you did?
All right, one story. One day, we was driving a tank, and then one tank, through Germany, and we was coming down the road, and the tank commanders said for the gunner to put the gun on the vehicle that was up the street. As we approached the vehicle, it was a Jeep with a G.I. in it. He indicated us for us to go down the street, it turned into a great big field. We were the first ones in the field, and he told us to pack the Jeep, or pack the tank, and just turn it off. That day, there was a continuous row of tanks and aft racks and supply vehicles that came into that field. I'm probably lying to you, but I'll say there was a billion vehicles in that field that particular day, and it lasted all day long and the next day. About three or four days after that is when the president passed away. And a few days after that, there was a roar in the field, a lot of hollering. That's when the Nazis gave up. The Russians had gone into Berlin, and I figured that was what we were there for, but we never made it. So the Russians made it and killed Hitler, and that's the end of the story.
Extraordinary, yeah.
Thank you.
Roger, it's your turn. Can you tell me what you did in World War II?
What I did?
Yeah, what you did and what branch of service you were in?
I got to the Northern Philippines. That's as far as I got.
It's pretty far.
Didn't have to go back.
You never went back.
I mean, we didn't have to go any further.
And what branch of service? What branch of service? You were in the Navy.
Yeah. Yeah, there were three brothers in the Navy and one Army.
And one Army. He was the smart one.
I was the Navy.
Yeah.
My twin and I were Navies.
Excellent. Well, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad the three of you are here. Thank you, guys, so much. We certainly appreciate your service and your sacrifices.
I was assigned to the cooking area where you're supposed to feed them.
Mm-hmm. How did you do?
I didn't see any action or nothing, so, but I was there anyway, so.
Yeah?
That's what I had to do.
Keeping the soldiers fed. That's important. Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. That's good.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much.
Back to your seat?
Back to my seat.
Yeah.
You need help, yeah?
Yeah, go. You don't have to stay.
Stay and listen to us all you want.
There you go. Mr. Chairman, just while we're here, Mike Lanahan, would you just come forward for one second? So we wouldn't be here for this tonight because it wasn't for Mike Lanahan's idea. Mike had come forward and wanted to honor Charlie Bridham with...
He's been mine for 40 years.
Forty years, and really wanted to do something special for him.
Even when he was 60 years old, he was doing backflips and jiro, so that guy is in shape.
Yeah.
He's an extraordinary guy. Ninety-nine years young, but I think it's about time we did it, and I appreciate the help.
Ninety-nine, yeah. Ninety-nine years young, yeah. Pretty amazing. So thanks, Mike. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Wow, thank you.
He's the eighth or ninth great-great-grandchild of John Alden Solon. It's history, really. It's living history.
Yeah. And you're feeling old. Thanks, Al. Thank you. All right. Oh, that was great. It's a great little program, too.
It's great.
It was a great story by Mr. Gay.
So just to follow up on this, we still plan to do a tree planting and a sign posting down on Mill Street at the corner of Mill and South, which will be known, will soon become known as World War II Corner.
Oh, right in front of Mr. Bridham's house, too.
Right near his house, so.
For all of them.
So for all of them, to honor all the World War II vets.
All right. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is a new appointment to the Foxborough Commission on Disabilities. And... Welcome. How are you?
Hi, good, thanks.
You're going to introduce yourself in the uniqueness of having the new gentleman on your commission.
Right. So I am Susan Collins. I am the chairperson of the Foxborough Commission on Disability, and I want to recommend David Del Pizzo to you for the Foxborough Commission on Disability. He's wanted to join our commission for a while, but his schedule didn't allow, so I'm so glad that he is able to now. He has served statewide on the Disability Policy Consortium and the Massachusetts State Association of the Deaf. David has been employed at Springfield College and at Northeastern University, and he's presently working at the Massachusetts Commission for the Deaf and Hard-Ahearing. Personally, I heard of David several years ago. I don't think he's heard this story. My daughter, Kathleen, who is deaf, graduated several years ago with two degrees from Northeastern. She needed sign language interpreters or CART, C-A-R-T, which are people who provide captioning for her classes on the computer. Well, several times, she'd come home, and she would comment how impressed she was with Mr. Del Pizzo, that he always came through providing services for all of her classes, and she knew it took quite a bit of time and work on his part. So, and I've been concerned for the deaf and hard-ahearing residents of Foxborough can reserve accommodations, can receive accommodations. We want our town to be as accessible as possible to everyone. And now I'd like David Del Pizzo to have a few words.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. I really appreciate it. Thank you, too, for everything. I really appreciate it. I've been living here in Foxborough for 15 years. I used to work at the Learning Center for the Deaf before the commission, and when I started that, I thought this is a great opportunity to get involved in the Commission on Disability here. I know several deaf people that live in this town as well, and really, the goal is to see deaf people involved in the community events and make them feel welcomed. And certainly, you know, providing interpreters, allowing us to be involved, allowing us to, not only deaf people, but also people with other disabilities as well. I'm really excited that I was picked and looking forward to having more involvement.
Yes, and I think with our growing, our aging population, there's more and more hard-ahinging people, and they want to be involved. They've been involved, and it'd be horrible if they were, you know, left out in the cold. So I highly recommend David Del Pizzo to be on our commission.
Welcome, David. Thank you for applying for the position. Anybody on the board have any questions?
No questions. It just sounds like a perfect addition to the group. Really lucky.
Yes.
Extraordinary.
Yeah. Make a motion to appoint the candidate to the board.
A second?
Yeah, you have to. Chris isn't here.
I know. I was thinking that. Who's going to be the second tonight?
Oh, that was my job. I missed it.
All those in favor? Congratulations. Welcome to the commission.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty. Have a good night.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the help.
Thank you for interpreting.
Yeah.
Watching her was fascinating.
Something we should actually teach more people in half a town meeting, and teach more people, yeah, of doing that, which is great.
Well, not only that, I mean, there's kids up at the high school that learn.
Sure.
You know, have them do internships or something.
Yeah, that would be great for a high school kid to do.
To come and do that for, yeah, absolutely. Next up on the agenda is going to be postponed two weeks, the appointments to the cultural council. So up next is the conservation restriction. Bill, you going to talk about that?
Yeah, so I sent to you a conservation restriction, which was actually worked on by town council along with the Conservation Commission with a local developer for what is known as River Ridge. It was determined during the review process of this property that there was a significant portion of land, about 25 acres, actually, which was considered to be area of endangered species, endangered species, which made it eligible for consideration by the town to take it over as, not to own it, but to have access to it, and so therefore have a conservation restriction on it, which means there'll be no further development on that site. There is a portion of the land which will be developed, is about, I think it's about 18 or 19 lots that will be developed, but the remainder of that land will not be developed any further. And so this was, this is the final stage of this. It's been negotiated back and forth. We've met with town council and council for the developer and the commission, and the commission has endorsed this action, and it's there before the board tonight for your final consideration.
Any questions?
Yeah. Just because I had someone reach out to me recently about this parcel, and I don't know if this is the exact piece, but from what I understand, this is all connected to some new construction, maybe where the solar panels are and some vacant land. I understand this has to do with, you know, certain species on the property, but is there anything within this with that area that needs to be cleaned up? Because it does fall under that, we all know that blanket of area that has some contamination. So anything to speak to regarding that?
So this, the land that we're talking about is not area that has to be cleaned up.
Okay.
All right. So this is the area that, we actually excluded that area from consideration specifically, and also put extra protections in to protect the town in case there was any kind of concerns over that.
Okay.
So in fact, it actually was gut-reviewed by the E O E A, and they thought, actually, that the language that was put in was actually one of the best they'd seen.
Okay, great. So we're protected there against any kind of contamination. It's not even this parcel of land.
Exactly right.
Anybody else? So it seems a little, you know, like unusual to me to hear that we don't own the land, but the Conservation Commission can control that.
It'll be restricted, so there won't be any further development on the site. All right, so, and primarily, it was put under consideration by the Conservation Commission because there's a provision of the state law, state regulation, that requires to be put into that state if, in fact, it's determined that there is endangered species on certain portions of the land. And so what we did, we didn't do, obviously, the developer and the commission carved out a piece of land, about 25 acres, which is most impacted by this. There are other areas that were contaminated, which we know about, but those areas were not under consideration for this protection. So that area is going to stay in its current state. That's actually regulated by D E P, and the state, and we're not going to be involved in that piece of it.
Okay. But they need our approval as the last step.
As the last step, right.
Okay.
Is there any dollar cost to us because of this, and are there solar panels on that? Or is it just vacant land?
No, it'll be vacant land.
Where it's Foxborough Solar Partners, that's just what's confusing me.
Correct, yeah. So they're just, that's the name of the company.
Okay.
All right, so, but we don't, the 25 acres will be vacant land.
Okay.
All right. Steph, I'll accept the motion.
Motion to approve the conservation restriction for River Ridge, ugh, my tongue tonight, which is up division, as proposed by the Conservation Commission.
All right, Leah, you're up.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So enthusiastic.
It's very exciting. We're waiting years for this, literally.
All right. We were waiting for Deb Jardino, but we're way ahead of schedule, so we'll...
Do you want to hold her?
Yeah, we'll have Bill do his update in the meantime. Town manager's update.
Great, thank you. One portion of my report's going to be delayed until after your action because it deals with the approval of donations.
Should we skip right to that, then?
Do you want to just do that for us, and then I can go?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, so, under selectman's update, under old business, it was brought up two weeks ago by Leah that, you know, let's just get a motion on the board to have Bill approve any action item that would deal with a donation for $100 or less. And so we put it on as a motion. Before I do the motion, though, any questions? Does that look good to you guys?
Yeah, and just the background for how it came up, if you all remember, when we did the wayfinding signs, we just did one motion for all those donations, I think it was like $5,000, and, you know, it kind of had me thinking, we do all these little one-by-ones, we can just kind of condense them in the interest of time, maybe read some names, but just do them as one action item. So it's just kind of clerical to keep things moving along more quickly, especially on meetings when we have lots of them to get through. And then we have to sign them all after, so I think now we wouldn't have to sign every single donation by hand to all five of us. It's Bill's job now.
All right, great.
Yeah, the only question I would have is, do we have, I don't think we need this to make the motion tonight, but normally, when we get a donation, is there something that goes out from the town thanking them, or is it, do we leave that just specifically up to where the donation went? I'm all for it. I think it's great, and there's a lot of paperwork that goes with it. I just wonder if, and I don't think anyone's making a donation to hear their name at a selectman's meeting, but I do think it's nice that they're recognized.
Bill's still going to notify, indicate the name of the individual.
Yeah, it'll just be condensed. It would be, you know, $25 donation for the Council on Aging from Stephanie Doc, and, you know, we'll still read the names. We'll just condense.
We just won't have to vote on each one.
Yeah, we have to vote enough to sign, so we'll still acknowledge.
Yeah, and I'm sure where the donation is going, probably, you know, they're sending out a thank you as well. I just was wondering if, you know, sometimes it's nice to be noted, and of course, anything over $100, we would do here at the table anyhow. Great, all right, that's good.
Yeah, so I'll be part of my report tonight, so I'll get in, as soon as you take your action, I'll get into it.
Okay. Okay for me to make my motion?
Yes.
All right. Motion to, motion by the board to delegate its authority to the town manager to accept gifts to the town of $100 or less.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
While we're under selectman's update, anybody have anything further under selectman's update?
I would just, you know, having kids in the schools, I just would say, you know, we went back this week, and just to recognize the amazing amount of work that every administrator, every teacher, every bus driver, you know, I could go on and on, but, you know, we're two days in, and just seeing how excited the kids are to be back, and, you know, knowing that we, as a town, were able to pull it off for now, it's really big, and I think that everyone on that side of the House needs to be recognized, too.
No doubt. You stole my thunder a little bit, that's what I was going to mention, too.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, which was great. You know, it's good to see the buses around town. It's good to see the kids waiting at the corners around town. It's, you know, good to see the kids waiting for buses with masks on, you know, listening to, you know, what they're told and what they have to do, you know, to get on.
While we're under selectmen's update, anybody have anything further under selectmen's update?
I would just, you know, having kids in the schools, I just would say, you know, we went back this week and just to recognize the amazing amount of work that every administrator, every teacher, every bus driver, you know, I could go on and on, but, you know, we're two days in, and just seeing how excited the kids are to be back and, you know, knowing that we as a town were able to pull it off for now, it's really big, and I think that everyone on that side of the house needs to be recognized too.
No, no, you stole my thunder a little bit. That's what I was gonna mention.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, which was great. You know, it's good to see the buses around town. It's good to see the kids waiting at the corners around town. It's, you know, good to see the kids waiting for buses with masks on, you know, listening to, you know, what they're told and what they have to do, you know, to get on that bus. And it just boggles your mind. I had an opportunity a week and a half ago to talk to Dr. Burdos, our superintendent, and just the amount, you're right, Leah, the amount of work they did. They were putting in, you know, 12, 14 hour days, six days a week, to make sure that our kids got back to school as safely as possible. They did an outstanding job. School committee, teachers, staff, absolutely did heroic job.
No questions?
All right, great. Thank you. We'll go back to you now, Bill.
So just a couple of things. The Dr. Sylate training is going to be next Tuesday at 5:30 PM, and Deb Jardino was actually gonna help with that, so she's a certified trainer. We did, of course, have the help of Tony Calcia for many, many years, and of course, we tragically lost Tony this past summer. But it also raises an interesting award that the board is gonna receive and the town's gonna receive and the committee for, and the citizen, the children's, what's the?
Child sexual awareness.
Child sexual abuse awareness committee. Thank you. It's such a, it's a long title. But it's, they're gonna be recognized tomorrow night by the YMCA on behalf of the town to receive the first annual Tony Calcia Award, which is going to be given for the protection of children and efforts being done on behalf of this town. And that's something that the YMCA does on a national level, and Foxborough means to be like the only community that they know of that actually does this training and requires employees to do it. So it's quite extraordinary in many ways, and so we're getting recognized as a town, and of course, the work of the committee for the things that we've done here to protect children at a much higher level than other committees do. So congratulations to the committee and to the town for the work that's been done in this area. But we are gonna continue, we do continue on with the training piece, and we, another session will be held on next Tuesday at 5:30 PM in this room, I believe?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, that's right. So the, just some also good news report that Mike Johns will be joining us back here on staff on Thursday. He's getting his casts off tomorrow, so can't get back here soon enough. Mike was actually in Thursday of last week to help with some negotiations, and he'll be back on the job on Thursday. We have developed some adaptations for him, so he'll be able to get back into it, but obviously, he's gonna work his way into his situation here, given the limitations he's had. But really glad to see him back in the fold here, and happy to have him back on staff.
It was nice, I was on the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative Meeting last Wednesday, and it was nice to see his name pop up. It was unexpected surprise, so it was nice to have him back and joining.
It's great, great to have him back. Working on the health fair details, which is something we normally do. Actually, a lot of people look forward to, a lot of the staff members look forward to this. It's something that we do annually over at the middle school, and it's an all-day event that we focus on, on health insurance choices, life insurance. We also go through different healthcare offerings, healthy lifestyle types of programs, and all the things that, you know, try to go towards a healthy living style. And this year, of course, we can't do that, given the limitations that we have. So we are gonna do a virtual type offering. We are gonna try and still offer inoculations for any of the flus that are actually, to the ones that we have. We're gonna, for the regular strains of flu, we'll offer inoculations for that, and try and at least get all the staff with shots, as many can be available to give them. We fully expect that if we do, if one does become available for COVID-19, that the fire department will help us with that as well. So they're prepared, and they've got all the proper licensing to actually do this work. So looking forward to that as well. I did talk about, you did hear last meeting that the department was awarded a grant for a machine that would actually do testing within, have 15-minute results. That is, the machine is actually here, but the actual testing kits are not here yet, and we hope to see those probably within the next two weeks. So looking forward to that. We are gonna develop a, we are having a meeting on Friday of this week with a lot of the restaurant owners in town and also with some of the major venues because we're really concerned about what's gonna happen in the months of, in the autumn and fall months where the weather gets colder, and I see that, you know, you're gonna see, you know, more and more places that have outdoor dining opportunities are gonna start to be very concerned about what the condition's gonna be like to offer those. So we are, in fact, going to be talking with those restaurant owners and the businesses to try and get some ideas from them. We've also been working with the folks at Patriot Place to see if they have ideas, and we're trying to gather some ideas from around the country as to how we can make those offerings and make it more accommodating to have those offerings continue to be available to residents in the community. Businesses have done reasonably well, but still their businesses are off in many cases as much as 30, 40, 50%. And I think that's something that we obviously want to try and support them anywhere we can, even during the difficult winter months. We are, we are looking to start the work on the common for the electrical upgrades that was offered to us by Snyder Electric. If the committee recall, we actually got $150,000 donation from Snyder Electric to do electrical upgrades on the common. And we are looking to start that work around the middle of October. October 15th is what Chris is actually looking to schedule that work to be done. So we're looking to get that started and hopefully have it ready for the holiday season. And so maybe help with some decorations, right, possibly, if we hope, you know, at least we can have some drive-by enjoyment. You know, we see the lights on the common. So that's scheduled to get started this year, this year and another month or so. And then, excuse me, and then last but not least, the only donation we had for $100 or less is a $35 donation, and it was for the lockbox program for the COA, and it was offered by an anonymous person. So can't even offer their name for this time, so it's like right out of the gate, so.
Those are the ones we can probably skip.
That's right. For $35, so thank you very much for whatever that was.
All right, thank you, Bill. So what we, the boards decided is to have a department head come in for the next few meetings and just update us sort of like mid-year on what's going on in their department. You know, Chris and D T W started us off last week, and this week we have Deb Jardino from Recreation who's gonna give us an update.
Renee was to join me, but she's running late.
And we're running early. We're running really early.
Thank you for having me here to represent Recreation. Is there, would you like to start with questions, or would you just like me to share with you what I have?
Share with us what you have first.
Recreation is by nature a different beast than the other departments because of its revolving account. As you all know, for the folks at home, we only get my salary through taxation. Everything else in our department is self-funded through our programming, which has always been very successful, the biggest one being the summer program. So along comes COVID, and we lose several of our programs, all of our spring, and then, of course, the big summer program, which led to some uncertain times in our office until we were able to regroup. We thought we could run the summer camp. We felt that we couldn't do so in a safe manner for enough children to make it profitable. It was simply a matter of dollars and cents on why we didn't run the summer program. We are now in the beginning of the fall program season, and all of our programs have been extremely successful. And we're feeling good about that, we're feeling great about that, because it shows us two things. One, that people are looking for things to do, and two, that they're still turning to the Recreation Department for, you know, good programming that's fairly priced and is in their own backyard. So that's where Recreation is standing at the moment. We have, oh my God, I brought the wrong glasses. Sunglasses. Let's see. Typically, in a year, we run over 100 programs. We have three properties, Mill Street, Payson Road, and the South Street office, all of which we look as a board, we go over to the properties, we check them out. We share with other organizations and with other departments. We'll be sharing the Payson Road in October with the school department, but the school department also shares with us, so it's a win-win situation for us. We have purchased and used our own software, which allows us to register people, they can do payment online, and we can also do refunding that way, and it's all online, so we're not handling cash or checks of that nature anymore. We also cover our own maintenance on all of the properties because, again, the way that we're financially situated, again, a revolving account, we take care of all of our own needs and all of our own properties and all of our own activities. So we take care of two buildings on Mill Street, plus a playground, plus the pool and the cabins in the back. And then we take care of the South Street office, and we also take care of the Payson Road facility, which is the Ernie George Field, the Payson Road baseball field, lacrosse fields, and the playground, and the outlying areas around there. Of course, we do it with help from the Maintenance Department in Foxborough and also the D P W because we can't do it alone. At this point in the office, we have myself working full-time. Unfortunately, the coordinator position was eliminated because of our inability to pay her anymore without having programming to build, bring revenue in. And Renee, the Recreation Director Associate, did I say that right? Recreation Assistant Director, excuse me, is working five hours a week for Recreation still so that we can have some level of work being done, which is gonna enable us to get back to where we were before. It's kind of like the chicken and the egg. We had to cut Renee's hours, but we also still need her in order to get back to where we were. So she's been extremely fortunate and able to do time and work uptown hall in the areas that they needed as well. So we've kept her close by, and we'll be taking her back.
Can have a back.
I know, everybody loves Renee. So we've had, we've had our struggles. The fall looks great. The winter, we'll just have to wait and see, but I think we received the message from the community loud and clear that we want something, you're offering it, we'll take you up on that offer. And, you know, that was the message we always wanted to get across, is that we're here for you.
So what are some of the programs you're doing this fall?
Right now, we're, everything is outside, of course, so we're doing Pee Wee Soccer for the little ones. We're doing a theater class. We are doing, Laura Canfield, our director, has done it all outside throughout the summer and one prior to school starting, and that was done at the Mill Street property. We have a playgroup that has been extremely successful in the past. That too is run out of Mill Street. And typically, the class size would be 12 to 15, but due to COVID regulations, it's been cut back to eight. But again, they're there, they're enjoying it, and we're able to run it. We have tennis lessons. We have babysitting coming up. We have how to stay safe at home, home safety courses coming up for the young teens. We also have.
Computer programming. I just saw that one in Brazil.
Computer programming, yeah. These can either be done online or be done in small groups down at the Mill Street area. Bill has given us a task to look at another type of programming that we're not used to running, but we're gonna be looking into that for him and for the needs of the town.
Talk about that. Just, we're looking at the possibility of providing some level of daycare service for employees because it's expensive proposition for them to go to some of the private entities that are around here. And then, we think we can do it at, you know, reduced costs because we have the facility. And what we're trying to do is, with Deb's help, is, you know, use one of the Mill Street Recreation Center, which is actually really well-suited for that kind of use.
It absolutely is.
So the one challenge is that we're trying to get is we don't have Wi-Fi service in the building, so we're trying to get that done. We do have, Comcast has a connection there, though, and it does have TV in the building, so that means we can actually maybe work off of that to develop a Wi-Fi system. So we're working on that right now. If that happens, we might be able to offer that service to our employees because it is impacting several departments with folks, you know, kids going back to school. You know, we're trying to be respectful of the situation, but, you know, we still need to get the work done. So we're trying to make it as easy on them as it is on, as we can, so we can, so they can do their work and yet the kids can be, you know, well-supervised and protected during the situation as well.
Great idea.
Right. We're working on, we're working on that slowly because the first hurdle would be the internet because we can't bring them in to do remote learning if they're not internet-enabled. We also are running flag football, which starts Friday night, which we're very excited about because that's one of our bigger programs, one of our bigger revenue generators. We also are doing every, all of our programs under COVID regulations, state and local. The other thing that we do, the rec department does, is that we rent out fields, and that's a source of income for us, but it goes into an account that is to be put back solely into the fields or into the properties. And that is done in conjunction with Foxborough Youth Baseball and the high school and other sports groups so that those groups do always come first in the rental, the great source of revenue. They fit into the program as, you know, third option so that nobody else is displaced. The fields part of the job is a very interesting part, and I truly enjoyed working with all of the groups that represent the fields and their usage. Excuse me. What else? We have a great friends group, Friends of Foxborough Recreation. They do fundraising for us throughout the year. They share with us any costs that we may have because we do run programming, have had run programming for free, and hope to continue to do that. The Halloween parade, Christmas tree lighting. Am I forgetting?
Farmer's market.
Farmer's market, thank you, Leah. Again, all of these were not in play this summer or spring because of COVID. We have every intention of, once we're able to, to bring everything back and to provide services at a level that they were at prior to COVID because we were on a great path, and I would expect to be again.
Any questions from the board?
No. I think you're a department with a lot of unknowns as we move forward. We can't wait to see, you know, what happens and where it goes, but we've done a good job bending and flexing.
Well, that's why I was curious what the fall programs were, and there's a lot of them. That's great.
There is. It's utilizing all of the fields we have, all the space we have, be it Mill Street or the field at Payson Road. We're also getting use of the turf, so a little bit of everywhere, down at the booth. We're making good use of our properties, and thankfully, they're all well-maintained and ready to go at a moment's notice.
Great. Thank you.
And actually, I have just one comment because Deb mentioned the Friends of Foxborough Recreation. So I was the starter of the Friends of Foxborough Recreation many years ago. Well, not many years ago, but just to reiterate what Deb said, you know, our last stuff kind of got put on hold. We were very proud to fundraise and help out wherever we could. And so our chair right now, Shannon Seuss, has just kind of reached back out and we're trying to get us back together because there are some things like we've done, you know, the fundraising through restaurants and so, so things that we could possibly still do that aren't really getting, you know, people together. And so we're looking forward to jumping back into, you know, to, for our part of helping out with some fundraising for, yeah.
We also have a couple of plans in the works for Halloween, which I won't get into now, but because we don't know what Halloween is gonna look like, whether there's gonna be a state mandate to not have it or a local mandate, nobody knows. So in efforts to still provide the families and the children with something Halloween-y, we have a couple of things on the back burner to be continued.
And I know that, I don't, not saying I have feelings either way on it, but that did come up at our Foxborough Common Business Collaborative Meeting about Halloween, and JB Arrow sits on that committee, so I did ask him if he expects any kind of guidance at a statewide level on Halloween. And he wasn't sure yet, so we've asked the question if that will be left locally or statewide, but.
We've not heard any, got any guidance at all on it.
Yeah, we've got, sorry to interject, but we had somebody call and ask, and the Health Department said that the Mass DPH is aware of that, and they're looking to have that information in the coming weeks.
Yeah, so I'm sure we'll hear, but, yeah.
Some sort of Halloween in Foxborough.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in. It was a great report. And a good follow-up.
Renee will be showing up soon.
Wait for her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. I just, I noticed that Jane Pierce was on earlier too because she was here for the conservation action, but that was, you already took that up, so it's already done. So Jane, you're all done. You don't need to.
Did she have any comments or any?
No, she just was here for questions in case she had any questions about it, so, yeah. So thank you, Jane.
All right, we'll go through action items.
Okay. Motion to extend liquor license for Saga Steakhouse at Patriot Place for 9/27, 10/11, and 11/29 to begin service at 10 o'clock AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Since we do have a number of the Patriot Place ones this weekend too, I did reach out to them just to see what capacity was like last weekend, and, you know, there weren't any concerns or, you know, big. any, any concerns or, you know, big mobs of fans. There, some of the restaurants had capacity. I heard some people were able to kind of even walk in without reservations. So.
On that note, Bill and I and Chief Kelleher met at the fire station about eleven o'clock on Sunday. Chief Kelleher brought us down and we walked around for a good hour, ended up speaking to Brian Early just to see what that first.
Yeah, I didn't know you guys did that. So, you know, had I known that, I was kind of calling them and seeing how.
Oh, no. Yeah. It was like a, it was like a last minute type of thing we're going to do. We decided just to go up and take a look because we weren't sure what was going to, what we're going to, what we've got for a crowd.
Right. That's why I was curious. I mean, it was really.
Not only from the restaurant side of you, just from people. And sadly, there weren't a lot of people up there.
In fact, the follow-up I had today was it really was under, an under-impact as opposed to an over-impact. So, we obviously want to support them as much as we can, but it's interesting. Some of the numbers, some restaurants actually are doing better than last year, believe it or not, at this time. But, but majority of them are actually off rather significantly, forty to fifty percent in some cases.
And when we were talking to Brian Early, you know, from Patriot's Place, you know, they are also starting to look into the winter.
Yeah.
And what's going on. So, he's very interested in that meeting on Friday.
Yeah, we invited him to be part of that.
To be a part of that. Okay.
So.
We voted, right? Or did I?
Yeah, we did. We voted, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Next one.
Okay. Motion to extend liquor license hours for Wormtown Brewery for Sundays starting September twentieth, two thousand twenty, until December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, to begin service at ten o'clock AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Did you skip the Renaissance?
Did I skip one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Is that, can I just backtrack or does it matter?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right. Motion to extend liquor license hours for Renaissance Hotel at Patriot Place on September twenty-seventh, October eleventh, and November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi. Motion to extend liquor license hours for Scorpion Bar on September twenty-seventh, October eleventh, October twenty-fifth, November fifteenth, and November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, to begin serving at ten o'clock AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to extend liquor license hours for CBS Sporting Club on September twenty-seventh, October eleventh, October twenty-fifth, November fifteenth, and November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, to begin serving at ten o'clock AM.
Second.
Chairman, it is important to note that not every one of these games are going to start at one o'clock. So, I'm not sure why they need to have the early serve. I mean, they certainly had, they, they wanted to bring in the business, but a lot of them do it because the game starts at one.
And I brought that up. If I was a restaurant, I would request every Sunday, why not do it for away games?
Yeah.
You know.
But apparently, they, they don't bring in the, the numbers.
Yeah, but it gives them the opportunity if they want to do brunch.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think we want to deny anybody that, but I just, it's just there is, but there's no, there's a, I mean, one of the groups only wanted it just for the, the four, the three games that start at one o'clock and that's it.
I noticed, I noticed, and actually, when you said any discussion, I was almost going to kind of bring that up. Then, then I thought, well, like Leah just mentioned, maybe they just want to do it all Sundays just to get that little extra time to maybe have a brunch if it's an away game, even if it's a, a four o'clock.
If I could just say a couple of things. First of all, it's actually not a bad thing for them to do it, period, because under COVID, you're required to have meals while you serve alcohol. So, you cannot order just alcohol. You have to have a meal, you have to have food with it. And as far as the.
That was the different thing.
Yeah. So, it is, so the brunch situation is, we were always under the impression, and I think this was where it was when we first proposed, is that you had to serve like a brunch-type food for, until noon time. The, the, ABCC has since clarified that and said you do not. You can always, you can serve, as long as you serve regular food, that's regular menu food, you're okay with doing that.
And Wormtown did clarify that. I actually thought they had the most thought, thought-out letter.
Yeah.
That they will have their full menu open and they also have that unique ability to do takeout from other restaurants to Wormtown. So.
To bring it in, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they, that's, it is.
I had a real question about Wormtown.
Yeah.
Knowing that at the time of their opening, they didn't appear to have anything but bar service and pretzels.
Right.
So.
But, but they, they actually proposed it that way initially. I don't know if you were here when that happened, but they originally proposed it as, they're a tasting room primarily and so, and they were the farmer, they're a farmer's license. So, they, they, but they said what they typically do is that they actually access all the existing restaurants in the facility when there were, are a lot of food establishments. So, they'll, they have, they have basically an offering from all the different menus and they actually bring it right to the place. So, people can order it at their, at their location and they'll actually bring the food right to them. So, and it, it worked, seemed to work very well.
You know, you had a comment, Leah, just about the fact of, you know, potentially allowing the liquor service even on away games. And one of the reasons that we've had the early liquor opening is when we have a game that day, we have staff on the property starting at nine in the morning. And to have the capability, and I don't know whether the Patriot Place group would want to have to pay for officers to monitor behaviors that can occur when people get involved with alcohol use and the excitement of a game.
Right.
So, I think it, it sort of follows from that.
Yeah, I think we're in a, my, my opinion is I think we're in a different world now. This is more like Six Strings had, you know, a Kenny Chesney brunch. So, I don't think that that would require staff, like detailed cops, you know, for, for morning brunch.
They were, they were normal detail anyways that on Patriot Place, you know. And there was, there was a good presence there because they didn't know what they would expect.
Oh, that's true.
You know, for the, for the games this weekend.
No, that is for a game that is going to be occurring.
Right, right.
You don't know what potentially is there. Certainly, I think the shopping capabilities, you know, if there's no game, people, and as shoppers can go up, they can go out to dinner, lunch, brunch, what have you at the different places.
Chief Grace, Grace has actually noted that as, as the Chief Kelleher, that the, the shopping stores at Patriot did really well that day.
Yeah.
And, and then some of them just came over to Patriot Place to eat afterwards or people were at the, at the dinosaur experience as well, came from that and came, came over and had, had something for lunch. And then, people started showing up around twelve-thirty, one o'clock for the game. And some people came in at four-thirty to watch the four-thirty game as well because of the Brady, you know, the Brady game. So, I think, I think it's going to catch on a little bit more because I think this was the sort of like a, you know, their initial phase of it. But I just, I actually think that people are going to say, hey, why not? You know, why not go there and watch the game? It's a, it's a good look, it's a good venue.
Yeah, or even take, take the game out of it just to go up and have brunch on a nice fall Sunday.
Exactly, right.
You know, and.
It's a great, yeah.
Patriot Place has a lot of outdoor seating, so it is an opportunity, you know, to visit a restaurant and, you know, maybe have a mimosa along with your eggs at the Renaissance.
That's right. But it's, you know, the, the key thing is that it's, people aren't, shouldn't be there just for the, they should be there to experience the food and the alcohol and, you know, of course, they have the fact that you can see a game. But, but it is, it's a great place to, to be as it is any one of our venues in town. And it just, it gives that extra special feeling because you're part of the experience here in Foxborough.
And I also think you, you are going to, you know, being in this business, you're going to attract a different group of people on an away game that just want to go and watch the game. I, I don't think, not that the alcohol doesn't come into play, but it's, it's a different group who's going there than is there on a game day now or an exist, a game day from the past where they're there for, they, they may have been drinking in the parking lot and then they come up to a restaurant and hang there for a while and then they're in at the stadium and then possibly back out. So, so extending their alcohol hours, or I shouldn't say just alcohol, extending their service hours on, on non-game, non, on away games or at this point without an actual game going on, I don't think it's going to justify, you know, quite, like Ed said, the need for more police up there. I think this is going to be a whole different animal in itself and it's just giving the, the establishments a chance to, to have a, a little bit more time. I, I might have said this before, I, on Shark Tank, that Kevin there that's on, Mr. Wonderful, he was on Good Morning America and he talked about restaurants and he said, most restaurants need to be at sixty percent working to break even.
Right.
And we're not even giving our restaurants this, this chance to do that if it weren't for people feeling the need to pitch in and, and order a little bit more takeout from local establishments to keep everybody going. So, like Leah said, this is just not.
Yeah.
It's just not precedent.
I almost think take the game day out of it. It's just like Union Straw or Olive and Mint, you know, wanting to do brunch.
Yeah.
At ten o'clock on a Sunday. So.
I think they're all grasping for anything else they can to.
That's why whenever, you know, I don't think we want to say no to their options. I mean, if, if, as long as it's reasonable, of course, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is support them any way we can.
Absolutely.
And Wormtown does have more of a menu now. I think when we went, it was just kind of a, they were just opening, you know.
Right.
It's not like a full menu like Tavelino's or something, but they do have more.
You're right. They do.
Now than, than they did, you know.
You're right.
All right. All those, we're, we're voting on Sporting, CBS Sporting Club. All those in favor? Bill brought, before you do the last one, Bill brought up real quick the Jurassic Park across the street. We've heard great things about that. It's been a huge success. They've extended it an extra week. You'd say standing room only for cars being backed up. It's really been a.
It's been a good experience.
Good experience, yeah.
And now that you've mentioned that, Dark, working at establishment down the street from there, the Red Wing has, has seen, especially weeknights, many more people in there and they're coming or going from there. So, I would assume that's happening at Patriot Place as well.
Yeah, exactly right.
So, yeah, the Jurassic Park has, has made a big difference to food establishments, probably all establishments.
That's how I heard someone was able to walk in on Sunday during a game day. You'd think you couldn't get a reservation, but came to Jurassic, not too busy, walk in, have lunch.
Yep. Yeah, it's great.
So, it worked out well.
All right. And also, actually, very excited for this last motion because this is a great story. I hope somebody, maybe Bill or someone who has a little more in our discussion, we'll talk about this a little bit. Motion to approve the transfer of ownership of Police K-9 Drax to Patrolman Kurt Paulister. Is that supposed to be Drax or?
Drax.
Yes, yes. It's a Drax to Patrolman Kurt Paulister.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So, this is a, an unfortunate set of circumstances on which this is happening, but we're really pleased and appreciate the efforts of, of Officer Kurt Paulister, who is the town's K-9 officer for the Police Department. Drax was, came to us, he's about three years old. He was, he's been on the job doing a terrific job and actually was being trained for extra type of duties that, you know, they, they weren't possible for the, for the previous dogs. And unfortunately, he came down with a brain tumor. So, he's being treated and is all, and showing some positive signs, but, but irregardless or regardless of the situation, circumstances, he's going to be retired from the department and Officer Paulister's agreed to take on the dog and, and to continue to treat and, and give the dog a good home for the remaining days of its life. But, he's going to have double duty because we have a new dog coming on. The same company who provided this dog, the Drax, has actually agreed to, to help us provide, provide us with a new one and the, the training will begin on that dog as well. So, we'll be working on that next phase. But, but yeah, this is, I highly recommend that you take this action tonight because he's certainly worthy and certainly sorry to see that happen, but appreciate Officer Paulister stepping up and doing that.
Any other discussion?
Actually, quick, quick comment as well. I, I don't, I don't know if either, when you gentlemen go on Facebook, Leah probably has seen it. There's also a GoFundMe that was started to help with Drax's treatment. So, the finance of this, which we all know if you've had animals, is veterinary and something this extensive, it can be, you know, quite costly. And the fact that Officer Paulister has taken, taking Drax on, the last I saw, maybe a couple of days ago, I believe there was about seventeen thousand dollars that has already been raised. And, you know, it's people in the community and I.
Stepping up.
You know, it, it, it just reassures us that this community is wonderful and, you know, hopefully, it's a, you know, like Bill said, unfortunately, he's going to be retired from his position, but, you know, he, he may end up with, with, well, he certainly end up with as good of a life as he can with Officer Paulister, but it's great to see that the community has pitched in to help with the finances. Because, you know, it's a lot for one person to take on, but when you get little, little bits of donations and so, that was, it was a, it's a kind of a sad story, but a hopeful story as well.
Sad story with a, with a, with a really nice ending, though.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. All those in favor?
And now, we have a motion to adjourn.
Well, I just have one other thing that actually I was reminded that folks have probably been wondering what's going to happen with the MBTA train. And we, we have just learned this past week that the, the MBTA train process is actually going to be put on hold for remainder of this year and will restart again in May of 2021. And for obvious reasons, I mean, there's no, there's no real ridership at this point in time. So, they can't really measure the impact that's being provided here in Foxborough. But, they are committed to working with us and they are committed to helping us get a proper evaluation of that service. And so, we're, we're working with them to try and make that happen. But, it's unfortunate, but it's the reality of the situation and we're going to, we're going to deal with it accordingly.
Second on the adjourn, adjournment?
Second.
All those in favor? Good night, everybody.